So, public comment is starting at 8:04.
Thanks, Chip.
I was preoccupied, I apologize. Okay, hi, my name is Jane Lor. I'm a 65, Wall Seifer Slade, Levittown, PA. I'm a resident of Falls Township. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the health issues. My son, I don't really want him to be masked. I don't believe personally that it should be mandated. I really believe that there are different situations for every individual. And they should all be treated individually, not like a giant across-the-board situation.
I don't want to sit, but I will. So, actually, I also wanted to segue into saying that Dr. Smith, on behalf of the taxpayers and the parents of the Pensbury School District, we welcome you here. Through your personal work history, it appears you're a leader, always focused on enhancing the communities in which you have served. We look forward to working with you to improve our district and community, and we're very excited and hopeful to see our students' academic development be put back on track. We believe that in recent years, our district's reputation has been blemished by poor leadership and poor legal guidance and interference by the solicitors of Robert Clark currently employed by the district. Further, we strongly oppose, we just want you to know that we strongly oppose the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Program policy, recently approved by the school board. We don't agree that the program is written and formed will better serve our student body. Rather, it will cause division with our children. This is evident by the opposition that has risen amongst the parents before the policy had even been interjected into the curriculum. This district-wide decline began in 2017, and we've learned through depositions that were released into the current EEOC complaints that several lawsuits have been filed against the district. Your predecessor, Dr. Gretzula, lacking leadership skills, made multiple egregious errors in management of the administrative staff, creating a hostile workplace environment. Three school board members who left the board before their term ended approached Rudolph Clark regarding the burgeoning discontent among the members of Dr. Gretzula's staff. Mr. Clark referred a close friend and colleague, Joe O'Brien, to provide leadership training for Dr. Gretzula, and rather than overcoming the issues, it caused further discontent, eventually leading to EEOC complaints and three veteran lawsuits. In September 2018, Dr. Gretzula gave his resignation at a board meeting, which was followed by prepared statements by four board members, who currently sit on the Board of Education. These members, while fully aware of the human resource problems taking place, decided to push for a contract extension for Dr. Gretzula. On October 2018, depositions detailed allegations that these four board members staged attacks through misinformation delivered to our community. Their attacks were aimed at administrators who filed complaints with the Human Resources Department, as well as at school board members who held the majority vote opposing a contract extension for Dr. Gretzula. We encourage you to view the September and October 2018 board meetings for a better understand of the nature of the board members and their disturbing misconduct at these meetings. It is through them that the hostile workplace environment was created and had been allowed to continue until this day. As detailed in the above-mentioned depositions, a high-ranking Lower Makefield Democratic Party politician interjected himself in the situation by calling a dissented board member to encourage them to extend the contract. At the very next meeting, votes were cast, and the contract extension was passed. Understandably, the events infuriated district employees who were already discontented with the leadership. Dr. Smith, we strongly recommend that you prohibit this kind of political game-playing in the future for the good of our community and for the good of our students. Retaliation against administrators who voiced their concerns regarding misconduct by the former superintendent was swift. One board member allegedly stated that anyone who was engaged in causing trouble with the contract extension was going to be dealing with serious consequences for their decision to express their concerns. He continued by saying paybacks would be swift and vicious. RTKs have been submitted for the depositions given by this board member to confirm these allegations. That request was recently denied, but if it has been proven true that this board member did admit under oath to the misconduct, we are asking that this member be barred from contacting any administrator or Pensbury staff members without your express approval. We insist that any district employees or elected official of our district conduct themselves with the highest ethics and respect for colleagues and employees of our district. Given that this person did not have the decency to resign from the board, we are relying on you to prevent this individual from entering the workplace during the school day without supervision, and that the engagement with the staff is limited to conversations in your presence. There is a line of professional decorum that school board members should not cross, and this board crosses it constantly, as shown in the RTKs that have been answered. Thank you very much for your time.
Michelle James?
Reset the timer.
Okay, it's not me that's doing it, Chip has the timer, so you'll get five minutes.
I'll just use the phone for the timer. Yeah, try to fix it for me, thanks. Okay, you can go ahead.
Dr. Smith, welcome. My name's Michelle James, I'm a Lower Makefield-
I don't know if the microphone's on.
Michelle James, Lower Makefield Township, welcome, Dr. Smith. "One Smile Can Start a Friendship." These are the words I used to say to my children as they would get on the bus in the morning when they would go to school. How many friendships aren't going to be made because these children are masked? This option should be left up to the parent. Now, I'm going to segue to another part. In February of 2020, we were able to read the background claims of the lawsuits filed against the district and Dr. Gretzula. From what we understand, the lawsuits filed are simply unacceptable on every level. We are certain that after you read the documents, you will agree with our conclusions. It appears that the actions that occurred were the result of the adults in charge placing their priorities and their political ambitions before the best interests of our children and students. If these tactics and words were used by Dr. Gretzula, by anyone sitting in this audience today towards employees, we would have lost our jobs immediately. Instead, our school board went into self-preservation mode with the support of our solicitor to defend the actions despite the overwhelming evidence of misconduct. Depositions for the Moritz case began in July of 2020. We learned through legal documents that these depositions occurred over a four-day period during the final two weeks of July. At that time, the board and the superintendent were to be planning the reopening of our schools. The board once again failed our children and our community by delaying the reopening. They misrepresented and cherry-picked data from parent and staff surveys to suggest that neither group showed a strong favor for virtual or in-person learning. Our district was one of the last to reopen. RTKs revealed that the initial survey showed that 63% of the teachers and 65% of the parents expressed the desire to reopen the school with in-person learning. Upon a retaking of the survey, the percentages increased to reflect that 70% or more of both groups preferred in-person learning as opposed to virtual learning. Once the public was made aware of these findings, they could no longer keep the schools on lockdown. We believe at that time, the board and Dr. Gretzula were embroiled in litigation proceedings. Therefore, they dismissed the plan to reopen our schools. We have submitted RTKs for details surrounding the July 30 fiasco, but our solicitors have blocked access to these documents that would confirm or disprove our beliefs. We know that a huge number of text exchanges occurred among these board members at this time, but Rudolph Clark has blocked our access to them. We ask that you personally review the text message exchanges that occurred among the board members on and around July 30. And utilize your authority to overrule the solicitors and turn over these texting exchanges. This transparency will serve to heal the community and confirm the trust we should have in your leadership as you take the helm. To add insult to injury, the language that was used by this board towards parents in the October 2020 Education Committee was very concerning. One member here went so far to say that parents need to lower their expectations, that this school year was going to be just a do-over for our children, and that we should get used to it. The same board member then diminished the mental health of our kids, who were sad, and this board shouldn't, I'm sorry. They diminished the mental health of our children, stating that they didn't care that our kids were sad, and that this board shouldn't vote to reopen schools if it put even one person at risk of dying. She continued by stating that she didn't care what people thought of her stance since she wasn't running for reelection, and feared no reprisals. This member of the board is one whose conduct led to legal actions taken against the district in the past. Dr. Smith, you can relive this horror experienced by those of us in attendance by reviewing the October Education Committee meeting. Fast-forwarding to late October of 2020, an RTK requesting information related to an October 13 email written by Dr. Gretzula to the board members was submitting. The response confirmed that this email does exist. However, the contents, which would have proven to be personally embarrassing because it shines a light on what their priorities have been since these lawsuits were filed, were not made public. Despite that, many of us are familiar with the contents of the email. Again, this is proof of the lack of transparency used to cover up personal misconduct, which places political ambitions and self-preservation over the needs of our kids. We ask that you personally review the email exchange that occurred on October 13 among these board members, and that you utilize your authority to overrule the solicitors and turn over these emails. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Laura Hawley? Laura Hawley?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped it. I'm sorry. Brian McNamara. Sorry about that.
Brian McNamara, Lower Makefield Township, here to talk about the mask. Just listening to Josh struggle through his presentation tonight, it kind of shows how damaging masks are to kids. Josh was having such a hard time getting through what he had to say. And now, I'd like to segue as well. In November of 2020, one of the sitting board members resigned. Following his resignation, the school board president openly stated on Facebook, "No registered Republican would be considered for that seat." When she was asked to stop politizing the Education Board, she chariously argued with people on Facebook. Writing a request for proof that the process to replace the board seat was a sham, one member of the board compared the process to speed dating, and indicated that only pre-selected questions would be asked and answered. Three members of the board chose not to participate in the process, with one of those members stating that the other members should tell him who they wanted to fill the seat, and that he would cast his vote with the majority. The level of concern that these members have for our children is disgraceful. As you can guess, their pre-selected candidate was the newly-minted board member. The new member closed the meeting with expressing how excited he or she was to vote for a massive tax break for big business. It certainly makes it clear that their only interest is political. With the new year, January 2021, came the hope that the school board would have a different approach to the concerns and wishes of the taxpayer and residents of Pensbury's district. The board was very aware that the community did not support the tax breaks for North Point Development. But how could you say no to its passage when State Senator Steve Santisaro brought it to the table? Isn't tax revenue generated for our schools a major issue of the concern of any school director? We didn't factor into the equation that State Senator Steve Santisaro is an employee of Rudolph Clark. Isn't there a conflict of interest? 6,000 minimum wage jobs were created, will be created, while giving up 1.1 million in current annual tax revenue. That would have more than doubled with the reassessment of the property when sold. How does this benefit the school district? Not one person on this board has offered up an explanation of how minimum wage jobs benefited the community that you can't functionally live in on a minimum wage pay. To this day, no one has given the community an answer. The district, the school board, and the solicitor decided that they are going to start invoking Board Policy 903 to silence people. During the January 2021 meeting and February 2021 meeting, the board overtly refused to read comments that were submitted, and then they attempted to erase them from the record. RTKs were submitted to get the actual submissions. They were posted for the community to see and read for themselves. The deposition of a former board member, Jacqueline Redner, became public. The rumors have been swirling of all the misconduct behind the scenes was now in writing. 206 pages showed how the school was being run, how the misbehavior of these incumbent school board members that sit beside you tonight led us into the gutter resulting in an EEOC lawsuit. Finally, confirmation under oath that these board members did what was alleged in the community was, in commentary was so heinous, the district quickly moved to settle. We've yet to see the redactions removed that were ordered by the judge, but we are told there are responses related to our solicitor, Michael Clark. Please release all the depositions on redacted parts. This brings us to March 2021 board meeting. This meeting was critical, with hundreds watching online to find out whether we would move from hybrid to four-day in-person school session. On the agenda that night was the first reading of the equity policy. Of the people that came to address the equity policy, we listened to Mr. Doug Marshall and what he had discussed. He was respectful, he put forward a dissenting opinion. That's when everything broke loose. The board did the unthinkable. They removed 48 seconds of Doug Marshall's comments from the tape. And then they reached a letter to the community apologizing for not silencing Mr. Marshall, Mr. Marshall's microaggression and dog-whistling racist comments. The board has slumped to the lowest point in district history by disrespecting Mr. Marshall and falsely labeling him and his comments, and limiting his right to free speech. Thank you.
Laura Hawley?
Thank you. Laura Hawley, 50, Laura Lane. I just want to say that I do think that masks should be optional from the parent, should be able to choose. And Dr. Smith, welcome. I also want to be able to continue from the previous speakers in the chain of thought. By this time, the April board meeting was upon us, and at this meeting, the audience witnessed firsthand the viciousness of one of our school board members. She staged a pre-planned attack, as she had in the past, attempting to intimidate and bully Doug Marshall. We question whether her words were spoken to build a defense strategy for the two remaining EEOC lawsuits. In the lawsuits, this board member was accused of making heinous racist remarks. A school board member should never be permitted to speak to a community member in this fashion. If they want to invoke Board Policy 903, it goes both ways. Moreover, the unselfish behavior displayed that evening was intolerable. It is an embarrassing display of unprofessional conduct. The community feels as though the board members have no respect for this community, and that the members are simply trying to salvage their personal reputation by posing as diversity champions. While at the same time, one member is being sued for using the N-word in an executive session. Our once-highly-respected school district has been operating much like a soap opera, and is now the laughingstock of our community because of the conduct of this board. During the May school board meeting, the board sank to an all-time new low, if you can imagine going any lower than what we've already described. This meeting will forever be remembered for the infamous line shouted by Solicitor Peter Amuso, "You're done!" You've probably seen this on social media, as it has received millions of views by people across the nation. Our school board allowed a vendor, let me restate that word again, a vendor, to verbally abuse our community members over which the solicitor had no authority. Mr. Amuso attacked community members for comments regarding their discontent with the actions and policies desired by this board. His sounds, they were deemed irrelevant, simply because they didn't fit with the narrative by this board. His silencing of speakers that evening was clearly a violation of the First Amendment. In addition, Board Policy 903, which is illegal, was used to justify his actions. To prevent the public from viewing this fiasco, the district shut down the livestream while people were watching at home, to prevent the public from downloading the video and seeing the evidence of this misconduct, so hiding it from the public. While that was happening, community member Tim Daly was awaiting an RTK response regarding email communications that led to the March 30 statement from Toy Dregone. The document revealed that Dr. Gibson, with personal support of Deb Watchpress, encouraged shutting down any voice of dissent regarding the revised equity policy. In these emails, Dr. Gibson brands Doug Marshall as a racist, requested that his comments be stricken from the record, and strongly suggested that the board and solicitor be more aggressive in silencing any dissenting views about her equity policy in the future. Mr. Dregone responds by stating, "The board was in agreement with her," and that "in the future, she promises that she will be more assertive in hitting the mute button." Mr. Daly and Mr. Abrams had concerns regarding that Dr. Gibson's recommendations were contradictory to the data presented within the family engagement survey. The June 2021 school board meeting put Pensbury again in the national spotlight for its five-month censorship war against the community. 20 million people have viewed Simon Campbell's video that went viral. And Mr. Campbell has appeared on a nationwide radio show, as well as on Fox News. Over 200 people in the community came out to tell the school board that censorship will not be accepted. And these folks shared their feelings and the concerns over Dr. Gibson's equity plan. At this meeting, Dr. Gibson's resignation was demanded based on her misconduct in the email communications that were RTKed. Then another concern arose regarding Dr. Gibson's professional behavior that week. It became known when a parent who was aggressively pushing an RTK request from Penridge School District uncovered that Dr. Gibson was consulted at other districts for huge fees, two contracts that totaled $13,000. We have learned that in subsequent RTK responses that Penridge reached out to our former superintendent and gave approval to lend Dr. Gibson to Penridge for professional development purposes. So, we want to know-
That is done.
Why did the money go to Dr. Gibson and not Pensbury?
Thank you, no.
I'm sorry, Ms.
We just want transparency. Okay, that's what we're hoping for.
Thank you. Joanne Mastiana?
I have one. Joanne Mastiana, Lower Makefield. I believe that masks should be optional for our children, and parents should make that decision. Segueing, Dr. Smith. In July of 2021, through answered RTKs, we received a better understanding of what Dr. Gibson's interaction was with other districts. Emails uncovered more disturbing conduct that needs to be addressed. Within the emails received, Dr. Gibson lobbied Dr. Christopher Brown, Abington's Director of Equity, to attend the May board meeting to support her, given he is an LMT resident. In these emails, Dr. Gibson acknowledges that she is seeking advice on how to address the RTKs regarding her work with third parties. Yes, Dr. Gibson spoke with outside third parties about requests that were in legal review by Rudolph Clark. In that May board meeting, Peter Amuso slammed Doug Marshall and eventually threw him out of the meeting for using the words "critical race theory." Amuso falsely suggests that the CRT was not part of the policy, and Marshall was disallowed from using the term. Dr. Gibson's emails confirm that CRT is, in fact, part of the plan, and they discuss how to reposition it as SEL. It is still, in fact, CRT retitled. One of the emails focuses on crafting, quote, "crafting a response," end quote, for any questions regarding the diversity program and CRT. Furthermore, it appears that the PSBA has approved support in repositioning, and Dr. Brown shared his own personal work on how he repositioned it at Abington. One of the most shocking comments came from Dr. Cole James from Centennial, who shared that outside DEI groups want to know how she is going to push forward the equity policy if the verdict in the George Floyd case did not go as planned. Dr. Smith, there are 104 pages of documents received from Abington. All of the pages in emails refer to race. Our community is not racist, regardless of how this board, the solicitor, and one member of your staff wants to portray us. We are concerned about what our children are being taught and the ways in which the delivery is carried out. We do not want the school district to usurp the authority of parents and family. We want the district to provide instruction in math, reading, writing, social studies, and science. Moral, social, religious, and political issues are the domain of the family, not the school. We strongly disapprove of the students being part of any and all social, cultural, and political movements. Dr. Gibson would have you believe that race is a problem in Pensbury, however, her own family engagement survey indicates that this is false. A vast majority of the students do not find race to be a problem. Dr. Gibson's own data reflects that conclusion. Perhaps the problem is with the adults who are leading the charge. Dr. Smith, Dr. Smith, we ask that your first task be to review the equity audit and make the necessary changes to the policy to remove all elements of CRT and social justice from any future curriculum. We ask that these changes be delivered at the September board meeting to provide insurance to the community that the radical ideologies of this program never reach our children, and that a permanent hold be placed on any new curriculum changes until this policy is reviewed by all stakeholders. We have members in our group, Dr. Smith, who are willing to take part in this review and help you from beginning to end. We have members that have worked in the field of data analysis, law, and education, who would gladly be a part of your team. Our children are our most precious resources, and it is imperative that their education be nothing short of stellar.
I'm not sure how to say this, I don't know what this last name is, but the first name is Rashida. I can't read what the writing says.
It's Dr. Rashida Gari. So, it's nice to finally meet you all in person. I'm sure you've enjoyed reading the emails that I've sent to you over the last year. So, my name is Dr. Rashida Gari. I've been practicing medicine for over 20 years. I am a double-board certified physician with firsthand experience in the management of COVID-19. I'm also a community member and a mother of three teenage boys. I'm here to help you understand the issues surrounding the masking of our children in our schools. First, a few points for you all to consider. First, a few points for you all to consider. You on the school board have decided that our children should go to school all day, every day, wearing masks like they're some sort of infectious disease spreaders, which they're not. You are supposedly basing this on ridiculous CDC recommendations which are not at all backed by science. I spend a lot of my time trying to understand your reasoning and must say it's quite angering that you are even discussing the possibility of masking our children again for an entire year. As our elected officials, your reasoning is missing a few things, namely evidence, science, common sense, and basic human decency. So let me educate you all on some of the facts. First, masks and face coverings do not work. They just don't work. They don't work in preventing the spread of any viral illness. This was determined in part from at least three NIH-funded studies that clearly demonstrate that coronavirus and all other respiratory viruses are spread by aerosol particles, which are small enough to go through any mask. Next, COVID is never going away. Do all of you realize that? So pathogens with an animal reservoir cannot be eradicated. Are you planning on recommending masks for our children indefinitely? I'm sure the parents here have a big problem with that if you are. Next, masks absolutely cause harm to our children, including but not limited to increased bacterial and viral infections, hypoxia, which is a lack of oxygen, hypercapnia, which is increased CO2 retention, dizziness, headaches, syncope, which is passing out, shortness of breath, anxiety, and brain damage to our younger children, just to name a few. I could go on, though. Next, even if you all think that masks work, you know that none of the children are wearing the mask properly. You all know that. Next, COVID poses almost no risk to our children at all. Zero. The survivability rate for our children is 99.99%. This is as per CDC numbers. I'm sure you all know that. Next, in addition, you chose to close our schools last year unnecessarily because of, quote, "positive test cases," which mean nothing. Do you know why it means nothing? Because these positive cases are based on faulty PCR testing, which even by the creator, Dr. Corey Mullis of the PCR technology, he stated that that should not be used to diagnose any infection. I don't know if you are aware of that, but that's what it is. So next, what about influenza? The CDC estimated that 480 children died of influenza between 2018 and 2019. That's more than died from COVID in the last year and a half. Did anyone on the board at that time recommend masking of our children? Why not? COVID poses more, influenza poses more risk than COVID to our children. Next, there has not been a single case of student-to-teacher transmission in the entire world. Let me repeat that. Not a single case of student-to-teacher transmission in the entire world. So when you all are talking about protecting our children and protecting the teachers, it's a lie. Do you know what it's called when you force children to wear a mask for fear of a virus that causes no harm to them? It's called child abuse. Do you have any idea what kind of physical and psychological damage you are doing to our children by forcing them to cover their faces, thinking that the air is toxic and that everyone around them is sick? You all are dehumanizing our children, and you know this. Your job is to protect our children first and to educate them. You are not elected to do anything else. You are not elected to make medical decisions for our children, including masks and including vaccines. You're not elected to do that. None of you are. None of you are doctors. You know nothing about it. In addition, there is no law or regulation that allows any of you to require our children to wear face masks in school. Your motivations are disgusting, forcing our children to wear masks to make yourselves feel better and to protect yourselves politically. I will not let the school district mask our children any longer. Forcing our children to wear masks is a symbolic security blanket that has nothing to do with the education of our children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Bill Irvin. I have lived in Love Town my whole 42 years of life and have been in Falls Township for the last 21 years. I have four kids who are in or have gone through the Pensbury school system. I am here to speak regarding parents' choice and the option for masking. I am not going to speak about the so-called facts. In our current society, there is no such thing as truth anymore. Two plus two no longer equals four. People will believe whatever they want to believe. I can quote you scientific reports stating masks don't work and follow that by quoting just as many reports that masks do work. What is the truth? I can quote the same reports regarding vaccines, antibodies, the list goes on and on. Like I said, two plus two no longer equals four. The fact is, I, you, or anyone else is not going to change anyone's opinion on masking. This is like arguing about religion or politics. Anyone that has done so that realizes a waste of time, COVID and masking falls in the same category. What I will say in here and tell you is that as a parent, only I have the ability to make any decisions regarding my child's health, not you, not the school board, nobody. What is fear? The definition of fear, an unpleasant emotion caused by belief that someone or something is dangerous, likely to cause pain or a threat. Some people are afraid of spiders, some are afraid of heights, some are afraid of COVID. Just because someone is afraid of COVID does not mean they have the right to tell my child to wear a mask, just as I do have the right to tell them not to wear a mask because I am not afraid of COVID. Me, I am not afraid of COVID, but what I do fear is losing my freedom and liberty. Remember, only I have the ability to make decisions for my children. Just three days in school last year, my son came home in tears. All around his mouth was red sores. This was from him wearing a mask all day long in school. Every mask he wears causes this problem. Wearing a mask, it's not normal. We were not meant to wear masks all day long. God gave us an immune system. My older daughter has anxiety and panic attacks way before she was diagnosed with a legitimate medical condition. This was way before COVID. That makes her feel claustrophobic and makes her very anxious. These are legitimate medical conditions. My children have medical conditions that do not allow them to wear a mask. Masks must be optional, otherwise you're discriminating against those who cannot wear them. My children deserve to show their face. My children, they want to see their teacher smile at them when they answer a question correctly. They want to see their friends' faces. Most importantly, my children want to live a normal life. If you want your child to wear a mask, great. It is your child, and you have that right, but your fear does not give you the right to tell my child to wear a mask. To the board, if you choose to make, take the masking decision away from me, my decision very well may be to take my children out of this district. We will go to a cyber school. And for those of you here that don't know, that have the same concerns with me, the cyber schools are of no additional cost to you. The funding comes from our tax dollars, meaning our money given to the school district, then will be given to the cyber school of our choice. And no Pensbury cyber school, okay? You attack our kids, we attack your budget. Keep fighting the good fight. The power is in numbers. I don't see a lot of masks in here. Take it for what it is. Freedom over fear. I know the district has employees like Regina Roush over there, okay, who thinks parents' opinions don't matter. She specifically told me so in a meeting. Whether you want to say it or not, you told me my opinion doesn't matter. Well, I sure hope the school board cares about our input, because you know what? We have the power to take you out. God bless.
Rick Garnier.
Rick Garnier, Lower Mayfield. I'm here to speak about the cost of the COVID hysteria, a cost measured in both money and the health of our children, just as your inclusion, equity, and diversity is damaging to the health of our children also. Teaching our children falsehoods like the United States of America began in 1619, falsely teaching our children that our nation is inherently evil, teaching falsehoods like kids of one race are responsible for negative conditions of kids from another race. This is not healthy for the well-being and unity of our community. The divisive nature of your CRT is itself racist. We have many academics who might be able to pass a history test. They can recite the date of John Brown's attempted insurrection, but they fail to wrap their 21st century mind around the social and economic conditions of centuries ago. The history of slavery surely dates back long before the creation of city-states, but it was under the city-states they codified slavery under law and created institutional slavery. For 5,000 years, mankind had institutional slavery. It was normal for everyone, not one society was exempt. Slavery was common across the globe. Slaves were as common as a cobbler, a blacksmith, a baker. This is what the people of centuries ago experienced from the day they were born. We of the 21st century can't possibly fathom how normal this was back then, any more than we can fathom how normal it was to chop off the end of a thief. Slavery was an integral part of everybody's life, from Africa to the Orient, the Greeks to the Celts, even the Native Americans enslaved each other. No race was spared. Whites enslaved whites, blacks enslaved blacks, Asians enslaved Asians, vice versa, and on and on. But the first culture in the history of mankind to successfully put an end to this horrific institution was our culture, Western culture. This heritage of ours, I'm immensely proud of. Thank God for the enlightened Americans, the abolitionists who put an end to institutionalized slavery. This could not have been done without American values of democracy, free speech, due process, and a host of other honorable characteristics. Personally, as Pennsylvania Dutch, I am proud of my direct heritage for we were abolitionists before it was cool. I'm proud of our nation's legacy regarding slavery. The United States of America has been the best creation mankind has ever been blessed with. Try teaching that.
Evelyn Sirignata.
Good evening, school committee members. In regards to the new proposed health and safety plan, I ask that you consider the following concerns and questions. What data has the Pennsylvania Department of Health or CDC supplied that warrants forcibly masking our children? Not even one child ages zero to nine, literally none, have died of any variant of COVID in the entire state of Pennsylvania during this pandemic. For ages 10 to 19, 0.01% of the confirmed cases within Pennsylvania has resulted in death. Furthermore, in Bucks County, only two children have required hospitalization, neither of which required care in the ICU, which only indicates that for the vast majority of the already extremely small percentage of children who are even becoming infected with COVID-19, the symptoms are mild, without the need of serious medical intervention. All of this data can readily be found on the Pennsylvania DOH's website. We can all agree that children are at extremely low risk of COVID complications, and medical literature consistently indicates that they are not the primary method of viral transmission. They are barely getting or spreading COVID. The burden of the COVID virus with all of its variants cannot continue to fall on the shoulders of our children. They are the least affected by COVID, yet the most affected by mask mandates because their developmental windows are brief. I urge you to prioritize them by making masks optional this year, which would allow families to make choices based on their own health bio-individuality. You would think that the Department of Health would have a robust collection of medical literature that demonstrates that it's safe for children to wear a mask for prolonged periods, such as a full day of school. However, I have been unable to find such data. Before making a blanket mandate such as this, both the Pennsylvania DOH and the Health and Safety Committee should be providing parents with evidence that masks are not causing harm to our children, that they are safe and effective. This data simply does not exist. In contrast, a very large, nearly 26,000 children nationwide database of masking children in Germany for 270 minutes per day, about a school day, indicates the opposite. The following was a quote taken from the study, and it states that 68% reported that children complained about impairments caused by wearing their mask. Those impairments included irritability, headache, difficulty concentrating, less happiness, reluctance to go to school, malaise, impaired learning, and drowsiness or fatigue. Why are we doing this to our children, who, per data supplied by the CDC, indicates that children are not the driving force of the spread of COVID-19? A growing body of evidence implicates mask use as injurious to the human body. A recently published meta-analysis of 65 studies determined that prolonged mask use lowers blood oxygen levels, which impairs immune function, neurological and cognitive function, and stresses the body in numerous ways. Masking lowers concentration, increases heart rate, respiratory rate, body temperature, causes headaches and fatigue, and a host of other adverse effects. If nothing else, this meta-analysis indicates a dire need for more safety data. Masking children negatively affects them physically, emotionally, socially, educationally, and linguistically. When children cannot hear their teacher well or see their mouth, their ability to pronounce words correctly is inhibited. Masks also prevent children from reading facial cues and expressions, thus stunting their development of these social skills. As a parent of a child who already has speech delays due to a birth defect, this is of great concern to me. My last question is this: What are the metrics for allowing our children access to school without a mask? Our daily COVID cases are not even half of what they were during the height of this pandemic within Bucks County. It comes as no surprise that a variant now exists and that numbers will continue to rise as we enter into the school year. This is inherently how a virus functions. Will we continue masking our children indefinitely? At what point will these measures come to an end? Will families be forced to accept experimental products with known risks of myocardia, blood clotting, and Guillain-Barre for our children in order to gain access to school with unobstructed airways? Furthermore, if these measures are being taken in response to the growing number of Delta cases, this too is faulty logic, as we know that, one, virus variants are known to be less deadly, while, two, becoming more virulent. In other words, it is mutating to be a common virus with even less serious health risk to children than that of the original COVID-19. Vulnerable adults can no longer demand that children be forced to mask. They can wear a mask or accept a readily available vaccine or choose to stay out of certain situations, but they can no longer ask children to obstruct their airways for long hours to protect adults who have options. I ask that you, our district leaders, make choices that prioritize children, as that is ultimately the purpose of this committee. Where there is risk, there must be choice.
Thank you.
Hello, hello. My name is Truman Sternberg, and I am eight years old. Today, I will be talking about the mask mandate. When I have to wear a mask, it is tight, it is hot, it hurts my ears, and I have trouble focusing. I just do not like it. I do not agree with any of this. I do not like smelling my own breath. I do not like it at all. I think that each human being on this earth should decide for themselves. Thank you.
David Sternberg.
Good evening. Good evening, school board members and parents. I am David Sternberg, and my wife and I just moved to Yardley this past summer and absolutely love this community. We have never experienced such friendliness and welcome from the local community as we have from Yardley from all our time on active duty traveling around. We are parents of four children, two of which are excited to start school as first and second graders this fall. Having experienced such welcome, I feel emboldened to bring my concerns before you tonight against the mask mandate being contemplated for this upcoming school year. My job as a pilot in the military is largely data-driven. Flying is largely science with only a little bit of art. That being said, I would like to read a few quotes from my research through the CDC. Quote, "Interventions should focus on reducing transmission in and among staff," end quote. Quote, "Accordingly, we find that interventions aimed at children might have a relatively small impact on reducing SARS-CoV-2 transmission," end quote. And finally, I'd like to read to you one more. Quote, "Household transmission studies show that children were rarely the index case, and case studies suggested that children with COVID-19 seldom cause outbreaks. Children are..." Children are unlikely to be the main drivers of the pandemic. Opening up schools and kindergartens is unlikely to impact COVID-19 mortality rates among older people," end quote. There are more of these studies. But there are two things all of those excerpts, all of those independent studies have in common. I found those studies right from the CDC website as references in their guidance for schools this year, which is ironically what you had put on the TV screen earlier. And they all indicate that our children are not only not, not at high risk, but also aren't contributing to the spread of COVID in general. I ask you to please sincerely consider that. The CDC is recommending masks and social distancing for our children in the same document presenting evidence that says our children are not at grave risk and aren't major contributors to the spread of COVID. Before every flight, we come together as a crew and complete a risk assessment for as many factors as we can to determine what risks we will run on that specific mission on that specific day. From that assessment, we determine ways to mitigate that risk. We do this over and over, to the point that in some situations, such as when deployed, certain risks become common enough over time that better and better mitigation measures rise to the top. Enough time has gone by for us to much more properly assess the risks to our children, both of the much lower risk of COVID and the much greater detriment of masks on our children's health, to knock this assessment out of the park. Parents have the right to choose what is best for our own children, and if some choose to continue masks, that is at their discretion. But there should be no requirement, no mandate, to do so for all children. The evidence does not support this plan's risk assessment. I urge you to reject this plan and let the decision rest with parents. All of our children have been through enough. I spent 12 years in the Air Force, deploying several times, to preserve and protect our freedoms, not to have my children's right to breathe unobstructed stripped from them in a heartbeat. I did not spend 12 years of my life fighting for this country's freedoms to have those freedoms stomped on by lacking evidence and ill counsel fear. Thank you for your time.
Andy Stepp?
Andy Stepp, Fallsington, Taylor Drive. During this whole process, Ms. Polsky, Ms. Toy Dragon, Dr. Smith, Mr. Cannon, and Mr. Taylor, what do you all have in common? You touched your face multiple times during this process. If you truly believe masks work and you truly believe that you want to protect kids, then put them in respirators, okay? Just so you know, I gave my place in line to that son to speak in front of me. And if that didn't bring a tear to your eye, all here staring at me like I'm dead. And this is very concerning, this entire process. No emotion at all. I'm not going to talk on what I was going to talk before, so I'll let the next person talk. Thank you.
Aaron Lyons?
I'm Aaron Lyons, Falls Township. Good evening. I'm the chapter chair of the Bucks County Chapter of Moms for Liberty. It's nice to meet all of you. I'm sure you know what I'm here to discuss with you as it's similar to what most parents are here to express their concerns about. I'll start by saying that we already know your decision has been made as you made that distinctively clear in the letter you sent out to parents and students last week. I won't bore you with the science, since clearly, science is not what your decisions are based upon anyway. What I'm going to do is explain my concerns as a parent of a child who is also being pushed into a corner of continued suffering at the expense of his childhood. My son isn't in this school district yet, but he will be next year. I don't only advocate for my children, but for all children and all parents. We have fallen upon more confusion in today's world than I imagine most have seen in their lifetimes. You're trying to pass a requirement to force children to wear masks in school all day long yet again. I challenge all of you to go ahead and actually wear a mask all day while behaving like a kindergartner. Leave yourself one at home because you don't have one. You're only five years old. Sit with your colleagues, but not too close to them. Keep your mouth shut and listen to someone talk all day long. If you're called on to speak, make sure you yell because your small voice is unlikely to be heard through a mask. Come to think of it, you may not even want to bother participating anymore because you know it's going to be stressful for you. Your fight-or-flight reaction will kick in, and you'll choose flight instinctively because you're a small child being put in a stressful situation day in and day out. Your brain and body are going to retreat to what's most comfortable since you're not given the option of having actual comfort. When it's time for recess, make sure you run around and you're fully invested in your playtime. It's the only time you actually get to interact with your friends after all. When you're finished your allotted playtime, go ahead and sit back down in the classroom quietly. I encourage you to give this a try for three, four, or five days in a row, and let me know how you feel at the end of the week. I can guarantee you it's not empowered, energetic, or happy. By enforcing these mask mandates, you're not only imposing on their health and well-being, but you are breeding psychological and developmental issues that will take a very long time to reverse. How about a child with anxiety? A child with glasses who can't see when their mask is on? A child who needs to be able to see people's mouths to learn proper enunciations? Speech developments that normally could resolve themselves are being delayed. Children learning social skills are being handicapped and given an unfair opportunity. We're told on a regular basis that things like gender and sexuality are not one size fits all to your standards? However, you're going to tell us that medical choices don't exist and solutions are one size fits all? That's a pill that most of us are going to have a very difficult time swallowing, and I think you all should go home tonight and really think about what you're doing. I hope it keeps you up at night and that it haunts you. I hope you heed warning and make a change before you lose funding and watch the public school system collapse because we, as parents, will not stand for this any longer. We will pull our children from your district and explore safer options. Consider what you're doing to make a buck. I've always heard the saying that the love for money is the root of all evil, but boy, this is showing to be truer than ever right now. This is not about science or health. COVID is not a current threat to the pediatric units and hospitals. You are basing this decision on hypothetical situations and choosing to abuse children over opinions and not facts. I urge you to reconsider. Thank you.
Adam Bisher?
We had a malfunction, and we probably should address that. Good evening. My name is Adam Bisher. I have three young children in the district. I won't repeat a lot of what Dr. Rashida and the young man said that did a great job, but I have a small request regarding the mandatory mask policy. This community, this district, is filled with brilliant, successful educators, business people, professionals. And in our daily lives, we make hard decisions, right? And the most important decisions are hard, and we weigh... Most of the decisions have pros and cons, positives and negatives. We are talking all about the... What we can do to stop COVID, right? It's all about that. We are not talking about the negatives. I'm willing to sit here professionally, and there might be an incremental positive to the kids wearing the masks, but there's also a negative. Two of my kids have speech impediments. They see a speech therapist. The speech therapist told us stuttering, speech problems, are on the rise. That's a problem. Our young kids are going on the third school year where they have a mask. That's going to cause long-term developmental problems for them. My kids are having a hard time communicating. So I think if we want to be good examples to our children, and I would be willing to participate, we should at least show them what it's like to have a pro and con discussion, discuss the positives and the negatives of what we're doing, and come to an agreement so, you know, as to benefit their health and wellness. That's all I have. Thank you.
Chanel Sullivan?
Mrs. Toy Dragon, it's 9:03, but due to the malfunction, this will be our last speaker.
Hi. My name's Chanel Sullivan. I am a resident Lower Mayfield Township. I enrolled my son in 2019 at afternoon elementary school, and I called it the promised land. Full-day kindergarten. Now, last year, I withdrew my son to homeschool him. In fact, let me correct that. I'm unschooling my son. Example number one. I hear you guys say that you're going to be teaching these kids about safe and effective promoting vaccines. Read my shirt. My son was vaccine-injured. You want to talk about a pandemic? How many people know somebody affected by autism? Okay, that is called encephalopathy. Brain damage from brain inflammation. That's what my son's medical exemption is for. Now, you may not want to hear from the parents, but guess who found a way to heal their child? I took out a second mortgage on my house, and I detoxed his vaccines homoeopathically. Now, at home, my son is brilliant, okay? He is reading science and history books. He didn't read, but he left afternoon elementary school in kindergarten. He wasn't reading then, he's now. He's doing division. He knows all the elements of the periodic table. And I was told that he would be in special ed forever in 2017. He was diagnosed in the 98th plus percentile of the autism spectrum. That is a real epidemic. And one of the things that we did to help heal him was we did oxygen treatments and oxygen erasers. After that, he no longer had a 101 at the intermediate unit. The school district no longer had to pay for one person to make sure that my kid didn't injure himself and his classmates. Now, the pediatricians in this county have been extremely complicit in abusing my child. And you guys are all being complicit in abusing children by putting masks on them. I will not send my child to a school that teaches them to be afraid of each other, to be afraid of breathing oxygen, to be afraid of hugging each other. I am not going to send my child to a school that teaches you can choose your gender, okay? If you want to give our kids hormone blockers that causes sterilization starting at the age of seven years old, you want to go along with the health department in this country? I'm out. You want to get kids back in this district? You still working for your benefit.
Do you breach an hour? Yes? Okay, so that concludes the first public comment at one hour.
Much easier that way.
It is. It'll hurt less again. Forget about next month. Just get it out of the way. Or you're going to do a scientific study on that, too. Yeah!
I'd like to make a motion that we do the second... We move the second public comment now. Let's just get over.
This is my first time here, but it ain't my last. Just begin it, and I can get a lot louder. Yeah! It's not that hard of a decision. It's a yes or no. Yeah! One minute. You can spare it for my son. I just wonder if you guys wait for our children. You can take one for the children. Your precious son. Yes, I'm glad. I got you. Are you following your right to know? Oh, no, no! Oh, no, no! Oh, no, no! Oh, no, no!
Okay. Apology. I would like to make a motion that we do a second comment... Public comment now, and we'll move on to our agenda.
Second?
I second that motion!
Someone seconded? Second. Any board comment? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Approved. I know.
You guys can take a five-minute mask break if you like. I need to choke my mother if I live one down your business street. Get somewhere in the district.
Okay, we're going to begin second public comment. The second public comment is 30 minutes, and we will begin... Chip, you want to tell us what time we're starting?
It's starting at 9:10.
Okay. Colleen Beetz? B-E-I-T-Z is the last name, Colleen.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Ben Primich. I am going into my sophomore year at PHS, and I want to...
Excuse me, I'm just... I'm wondering, are you related to Colleen Beetz or something? Okay, so you're speaking in place of her?
Yeah, I'm on the list. You can cross me off if you want to.
Okay, so wait. I'm just trying to figure out where Colleen is.
They're switching places.
Is she...
They're switching places.
We're switching, we're switching.
Okay, and I'm sorry, what is your name again?
My name is Ben Primich. It's P-R-I-M-I-C-H.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, so I would just like to make, from the student's point of view, on why we should keep masking optional and not mandatory. Because, so, you know, just have a couple points here. When you go into high school, it's supposed to be a time when you're meeting new people and having fun. And when we go in, I'm just going to talk about my experience with masking. You know, you go in the first day, right? Everyone has their mask. And it's so tense, and no one's talking. No one's getting to know each other. It was like that for the first month. It was so bad. And, you know, everyone says, "Keep your mask up, keep doing that." That's what I did. And you know what happened to me? I got COVID. And you know what happened? It was the mildest cold that I ever had. You know, after that, I... I'm sorry, it got very uncomfortable, so uncomfortable. You know, it was so hard to concentrate. I'm not even going to lie. I'm old. I still, you know, it's hard, you know? You get the hot air in your face. You know, it's a stressful time. And so basically, what ended up happening was it would come down under my nose. And I think I'm a pretty good kid. I'm respectful. I, you know, I don't start stuff. And actually, I got sent down to the office twice for having it come down under my nose.
Ridiculous.
Yeah, yeah. Something on my record that shouldn't ever be there. And also, I mean, yeah. So, and then another point I'd like to make, this is the last thing here. With this critical race theory, Dr. Gibson, I'm on the football team at Pensbury. There is... I don't care what color you are, nobody does. There is no mention of race. We are all one unit on the team, and that's how it is in school. We just need to gather. That's how we do it. I don't think by you implementing the process, it's going to be dividing us more. We are one unit. We do not even mention race. And that's why I suggest to the board that you please consider, and we are... And that's why I suggest to the board that you please consider, and we are not going to keep wearing masks for the rest of our life, we're not going to implement this theory, this critical race theory. That's all I have for you. Thank you.
Somebody else will like you because you're a jerk.
Are you going to allow the last four people to speak from the first public comment?
I'm sorry, I don't, I didn't hear what you said. I'm reading from the first...
Is this the first public comment? Are you going to allow the last four people to speak from the first?
Yes, that's what I'm pulling from that list, yes. So I called for Arthur W. I just, it looks like R-O to me, but I'm not sure. Kim R-O.
It's probably P-I-O.
Oh, maybe it is. P-I-O, sorry.
My name is Kimberly Pio, Lower Makefield Township. I have three children in the school district, which sadly might not be the case if the vote is yes for mask mandates. I'm also a former respiratory therapist with 12 years critical care experience, but I won't waste my breath with facts and truths because it's clear that you on the board aren't interested in those things. If it's about science, then please acknowledge the science. Masks do not prevent the spread of COVID, but they do deteriorate overall psychological and physiological health. If it's about liability, then please acknowledge that the ill health effects associated with mask wearing pose a much greater risk to our students and district. And if it's about our children and the greater good, then acknowledge that human connectivity is fed through facial expressions and exposure to face is paramount, sorry, and exposure to faces is paramount to healthy, moral logical, rational, and psychological development. As parents, we spend years teaching our children to listen to the messages that their bodies send them when they are uncomfortable, unsafe, and when something doesn't feel right. Our children have been complaining of shortness of breath, racing, racing hearts, heart headaches, feelings of chest tightness.
You can do it, you can do it.
You see what you do to the community? This is all you. You do this. Because it's a direct result of your action, and you're in the community to follow the science.
But now, but now, we are telling them, don't listen to your body, follow the rules. We know what is best for you. Our kids are now abandoning, sorry, I really want to do this.
You can do it, you can do it.
Come on, get him doing it.
All right. Our kids are now abandoning, abandoning their inner wisdom daily to appease authority. If they don't comply, they know they will miss out on friends, education, and sports. Stop making our kids afraid, afraid of others, even themselves, believing that they might make someone sick. The implications of what is happening in this district with these masks are more dangerous to our children than the risk of getting a virus. I will no longer act as if this is normal or acceptable, or I should just settle for my gratitude, I'm sorry. I will no longer act as if this is normal or acceptable, or I should just settle for my gratitude that our kids are back in-person learning. Even if this is common for schools in Bucks County to hide behind a delirious, the delirious recommendations, it is not necessary, not necessary, safe, or normal. As a parent, I am responsible for the health and well-being of my child, my children, as we all are, as all are the other parents in this school district, not you. Speaking up is hard, being brave is hard, calling public attention to inconsistencies and dangerous mandates is hard, but watching our children suffer from emotional and physical consequences of wearing masks on their face inside school, out on a playground, where they should be playing freely and connecting with other children, is harder.
Dana Campbell.
I'm Dana Campbell, Lower Makefield Township. I have three kids also in the Pensbury School District. This actually was written by one of my children. He's a sixth grader, going into sixth grade at William Penn Middle School. He wrote this. "I'm 12 years old, and I'm going to sixth grade in a few days. I believe that everyone should wear masks during school. Since we are 12, my brother and I got our COVID vaccine, and a week from now, we won't be required to wear masks in public places. Some people may think that since I'm vaccinated, I shouldn't have to wear a mask, but it's not entirely about me. I had an extra year of preschool when I was little, so I'm older than most kids in my grade. Most of my friends aren't able to get vaccinated yet, so their only protection from the virus is masks. For me, wearing a mask is a show of solidarity. I've heard about some schools that lifted mask mandates and suffered. If that were to happen to Pensbury, we'd be back to virtual schooling. Many students suffered from virtual learning. Kids like me don't get to see their friends in person. In my opinion, seeing my friends in person is much better than through a computer screen, mask or no mask. Staring at screens all day isn't good for our eyes either. I would get headaches constantly. Kids with special needs also suffer from virtual learning because they can't get the care through the computer that they need. The kids whose parents work during the day would be home alone. Wearing a mask doesn't only protect you, but it protects the people around you, too. My mom is going to nursing school this year, as I am going into sixth grade. If she were to contract COVID from a sick patient and infect me and my siblings, and then we went to school and infected our friends, and they would infect other nurses, that would just be as bad. I've had several reasons why we shouldn't have to wear masks. I have heard several reasons, and many of them have a simple solution. For example, if your kid comes home with a wet mask, the simple solution is to bring a spare one. Coronavirus is a horrible problem the whole world is facing, but just like many problems, it has a simple solution. Wear masks. Would you rather have your child wear a mask or end up sick in the hospital? Masks don't take away freedoms, they give freedom. Just make sure you brush your teeth before wearing your mask, or you'll be stuck with morning breath."
Where's your mask?
Thank you, thank you. Ashley Ritter.
Hello, I'm Ashley Ritter from Lower Makefield. I am also a Pensbury graduate. I'm a nurse practitioner, and I have a PhD in nursing and health policy. I'm also the CEO of Dear Pandemic, a social media campaign that is spreading information to more than half a million people a month, answering everyday questions about COVID-19 in a style that's approachable and based in science. My children have never had a year of school without COVID. I don't like it, but that's all we have to deal with. I want school open, and I want school safe. I follow the science closely. Delta spreads much easier than previous variants. Mitigation measures work when they're layered. Cases will occur, and they will grow quickly. Lots of cases will cause disruptions to in-person education, and parents and families, specifically women, shoulder the disruption of school closures. We need a layered approach to mitigation strategies, and we need a flexible, proactive planning in response to an evolving situation, and these are my requests. I would like a transparent backup plan. I would like it to be offered to have a virtual flex plan versus a full year of virtual education for my children. I would like to know what is the education plan for brief school shutdowns that will be required intermittently? I would like to know how real-time screening tests of all students will take place. I would like to know what the thresholds will be to modify the current plan, health and safety plan. Will it be the size of the outbreak? Will it be community hospital capacity? Will it be the number of consecutive outbreaks? I ask that you be proactive versus reactive. I would also like to know what additional support you will provide to school nurses, teachers, and parents to support the education and health concerns of all students. I would like to know about how we are going to increase access to and information about pediatric PCR tests in our community. We are going to need perseverance in a very tough year ahead, and my goals are to minimize disruption, minimize outbreaks, and maximize, maximize the amount of time my children are in school.
Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Abrams.
I had a meeting with Dr. Smith this morning, this afternoon, he's very impressed. I'm going to ask the community to give him a chance. If this solicitor or this board tries to overrun him, or he does not produce, it is up to the constituency here to overrun a solicitor and the school board. But Dr. Smith said a lot of very positive things about including the community and what the community wants and needs, and if he's going to cook his own goose, that's on him. If he's going to deliver, let him do it. I did have a COPD attack on my way up there, and I brought this with me because I asked how many of these were in the school district. It's a pulse oximeter. It measures, everybody know?
Oxygen.
Blood oxygen level and pulse. Now, I believe Mrs. Polsky's is a registered nurse, and her husband is a pediatrician or retired pediatrician. There are none of these other than the nurse's office in school. When that kid is passing out from wearing a mask for eight hours, the teacher doesn't have a clue as to why. This kid is oxygen-starved because, as Mr. Taylor just showed us, they take a supple liquid, their lips are still wet, now their mask is wet, and the toxins and carbon dioxide their body's supposed to be getting rid of is inhibited from leaving the body. On the same token, the other side, that fresh oxygen they're supposed to be breathing in can't get into the body. I believe that anyone that votes for this, mask mandatory, should really personally take out a whole lot of personal liability insurance. Next case, D-E-I-C-R-T-S-E-L, whatever acronym you want to use for it. This community, the data, when I was shut down by the solicitor, was on page 16 of the Equity Report. And it said 92% of the community here does not see the need for any racial issues. I was shut down when I said you're taking care of 8%. I don't even believe it's 8%. What I believe, and I've discussed this with other people, is there was a conclusion. The narrative was made up, and the data was mined to match the conclusion. The conclusion was not made from the data. That's flawed. Plain and simple. That's what we're listening to. Let's get on to one more. I want all these people to speak tonight. We had an issue here where I was going to be charged $12 first and $41.75. Tonight, we're going to vote on giving the person for right-to-know information, who was willing to pay the attorney thousands of dollars to go to open records against me for $12. And for $41, that is how our money is being managed, and we are rewarding this person with a $15,000 pay increase. It is $10,000 plus 36% in benefits and Peasars, 36% in Peasars, and then benefits on top of that. That is an insult to every single taxpayer in this school district. We are all replaceable. God made us that way. We all retire, we all pass on, and someone must take our place. It should be done here tonight. We need a new business administrator. And we need to ask, we need to ask Dr. Gibson to update her resume so that she can go somewhere where they need her, because we don't need her here. In addition, the conflict of interest form was never, was never filled out. She's an owner of a company doing the same thing, and now we're understanding she's under contract with Bucks County Intermediate Unit as a paid consultant. I have never heard of a bitter conflict of interest in my life. Thank you, and have a good night.
Tim Deely.
First, I want to address your opening comment. I'm simply going to say boo, boo, boo. Doesn't feel great, does it, Christine? The lies that you put about me, the racist comments that you made against me, Ms. Walker, where you mischaracterized the things I said, and you, Mr. Waldorf, who apologized to that woman, and you accused me of microaggressions, and you accused me of dog whistles when I wanted to discuss data. There are no dog whistles when there's data, Mr. Game of Thrones. Shame on all of you! But good that you got the same treatment you delivered to me in what this solicitor did in doxing every single person that came in June, where our names, our addresses, our phone numbers were put on social media by your union fund friends. Enjoy it, Christine. You got what we got, and hopefully you get it more, and hopefully you, Waldorf, and you, Walker, get your justice served for the mistreatment that you have had to the community and to these kids. And I ain't got any candy or donuts for you tonight, Josh, so sorry about that. RTK, RTK, RTK. Christine, you in February threatened me with producing the costs given to this man right here. Where is it, Christine? Don't you want to show the community how I misused your funds? Or are you too scared to talk about what you guys have been trying to deny? Produce the costs! We dare you! So, let's talk about the RTKs that are currently under appeal. So everyone's know, there's going to be an in-camera review in the next two weeks regarding an RTK that this solicitor has illegally denied, stating that every communication was privileged regarding an attack politically utilizing taxpayer dollars of the school district against Victoria Chahovsky and Jennifer Spillane, regarding to an illegal, unenforceable Board Policy 707. We want to name which school board member had the tremendous audacity to think you had a right to use my tax dollars to attack two ladies running against you guys in seats? Because when we get the names, be assured, you're going to pay the money back tenfold. If not, we're going to be seeing criminal charges for the misuse and theft of our money. So let's talk about CRT, Ms. Gibson. I read 3,000 pages of documents over the last two days, and I want to thank you. You absolutely invigorated me for the things that you're doing in this district. When you shut me down when I wanted to talk data, because you guys know I am a data scientist, and I'm one of the best in the country at what I do. You shut me down intentionally because you knew when I gave my hands on her data, it was going to blow up your little scheme to create a defense strategy in your EOC lawsuits. I have the data. Robert already addressed it, so I won't do it again. But we also need to talk about the dissertation this lady did, which was confirmed in writing this past week, that it was Pensbury data. And in that dissertation, it concludes that Pensbury is a racist school district with racist administrators and racist teachers carrying out the orders of the oppressors. That's pretty much how it sums up, and it's about as intellectually dishonest as I could ever dream. could ever dream. And then we get the lies from our solicitor again, telling our, our administrators to say, "Oh, we had to destroy the data because Gwyneth Mercy told us." Wrong! I R B, federal law Mikey, three years you must contain it, get into the legal books bud, your ambulance chasing career really doesn't correlate to this law. So you heard from all the other speeches, all the documents we have here, thousands of them, all the examples and the evidence that critical race theory is regularly discussed in a D E I support group that was created by, as I learned in my BCIU emails, Ms. Gibson. She created it. But the one that was the most concerning to me is the, you know, I got all the Abington stuff, and I see Dr. Brown's here, I can't wait to speak, Dr. Brown, because hopefully this time you'll tell everybody you're from Abington and you're, you're Ms. Gibson's personal friend. But, in this email, a woman named Barbara Simon Simmons, who is a professor, states, I have like 10 more seconds.
That is your five minutes.
We need to stop the rise of white supremacy, Mr. Bailey. Why is Dr. Gibson being invited to this meeting?
Thank you.
You guys need to deal with it, CRT is here, and we need you to address it.
Simon Campbell.
Let me just thank all of you for coming tonight. One of the, one of the best things about living in the United States is the expression "we the people," and here you all are, thank you and God bless you. Let me address you now, government. I'm here tonight, Simon Campbell, Pensbury School District resident, former board of director, I'm a member of the board of directors, I'm here tonight to talk about your critical race theory political indoctrination program being perpetuated by you far-left extremists in conjunction with the self-serving, profiteering Dr. Gibson. This book, I want everyone to get a copy of this book, get it on Amazon, it's called Something Happened in Our Town, A Child's Story About Racial Injustice. It is geared towards five-to-eight-year-old children on Amazon. I have a parent who has shown me the email from the teacher that this book was put into a Pensbury School District classroom. I'm going to read certain passages from this book, so we can all understand what your critical race theory agenda is about. It's a child's storybook, and I quote, "Something bad happened in our town. The news was on the TV, the radio, and the internet, the grown-ups didn't think the kids knew about it." Remember, this is for five-to-eight-year-olds. "But the kids in Ms. Garcia's class heard some older kids talking about it, and they had questions. After school, Emma asked her mother, 'Why did the police shoot that man?'" "It was a mistake," said her mother, "'I feel sad for the man and his family.'" "Yes, the police thought he had a gun," said her father. "It wasn't a mistake," said her sister Liz, "'The cops shot him because he was black.'" The book continues with dark images, sinister images, for five-to-eight-year-olds to look at. "I know what a slave is," said Emma, "'That's when you have to do whatever the other person says.'" "Yes, slaves had to do whatever white people told them to do. Even after slavery ended, white people didn't let black people live where they wanted, go to school with white people, or vote. Who are white people? White people came here from places in Europe, or Russia, or other countries. We are white, even though our skin is light tan." "Did our family do those bad things a long time ago?" asked Emma. "Yes," answered her mother. "Back then, many white people thought they were better than black people, even though it wasn't true." I don't need to continue reading anymore from this vile, revolting book that you people have put into the classrooms in this school district. Innocent kids, five-to-eight-year-olds, you know what they do? They play in the sandbox together. They don't see each other's skin color, they wonder why the clouds are fluffy, why the worms are growing out the soil, and you, we come to this school district, and the government is putting this political propaganda into their innocent minds. This isn't critical race theory, it isn't equity, it is disgusting, government-promoted filth of innocent young minds, that's what it is. And let's get one thing clear, all of you, and you've tried to silence speakers at public comment, broke the law, do you understand me? You broke the law. Each and every one of you will be held accountable for your violations of law against the First Amendment rights of the citizens. It is time for Gibson to resign or be fired. And let's just say this, the, the six, as for masking innocent kids, masking them, shutting down their schools, we pay for these schools, how dare you shut them down? Causing physical and emotional harm to children. There are elections coming up, there are six seats coming, you're all done, good night.
Time is now 9:40, and that concludes second public comment.
One more?
That concludes second public comment.
That's the end of second public comment, thank you.
Have a thing, if you'd like to help, Bobby. I know I was on the list, so is it being truncated because of lack of time, or is it being truncated because of time? Okay, can, can, I do have something to say that's unrelated to this, so is there gonna be an option for a second? I can't hear, I can't hear you. Okay, excuse me. So is there gonna be an option for another public comment that truly is second public comment? Because I understand that the option exists to extend first public comment, that you wanted to get through everything, and that's wonderful, but I signed up for second comment purposefully to make sure there was time for something that's not on the agenda, so I'd like an opportunity to make that comment whenever appropriate.
See, unfortunately, it, it, this, that was, the only thing that we changed, we just changed the, the comment from being, the second comment from being later to being right now. This has nothing to do with agenda or non-agenda items, this has to do with the fact that we did an hour and a half of public comment, and that's all we have time for, unfortunately.
Mrs. Toydrugony? Mrs. Toydrugony, if I could, Mrs. Toydrugony, if I could? I just wanted to let you know that there's comments that I was waiting to see if it came up with agenda items, and informal, and that's why I put it in second, if it didn't come up, I was gonna ask the question. So if there's an opportunity to have a, a true second public comment for its original intention, which is to follow all the agenda items, and then have an opportunity for people to add to the comment if it wasn't mentioned, it would be great to have that opportunity later on. Thank you.